Good afternoon, everyone. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is special meeting number one today. Today's February twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt a legislative agenda for special meeting number one.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the election of a new council member, Megan Outen.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. At this time, I would ask that our new council member-elect, Megan Outen, please step forward and take your oath of office.
Please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Megan Outen.
Do swear and affirm.
Do swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Do the best of my skill and judgment.
Do the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
City Council Member for Salisbury, Maryland.
City Council for Salisbury, Maryland.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the laws and Constitution of this state.
Just tell me where you have been.
The new city council member has been sworn.
Like they say on The Voice, my team is full. At this time, we will adjourn the special meeting number one. So Megan, you are now ready to work.
Okay, ready to go.
We will open up the work session for today. And the first item on the agenda is South Division Street, a veneer annexation introduction. We have Bill Holland here. Yes, he is. There he is. Mr. Holland.
Good afternoon.
Name is yours, sir.
Coming back to the veneer South Division Street annexation property located on the east of South Division on the corner of Orange Road. Contains approximately one point eight acres. On July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, it was approved by the planning commission to be a residence college/university. The annexation plan is to develop property into two buildings, eighteen apartments. It could be, as a plan, if you saw, it's called stack flats. That also included approved parking, street lighting, dumpster enclosures, and also be applied to the planning commission for comprehensive planning to be applied to develop. Once the property is developed, the value of the annexed property would be approximately two million eighty thousand dollars. With annual revenue at approximately twenty thousand four hundred fifty-four dollars with a net estimated fiscal impact to the city of six thousand five hundred thirty-four dollars. I recommend this to the council to move forward to the next session to introduce the annexation and move it forward to public care.
Any questions or comments?
No.
No.
All right. We have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
All right. Next up is the CIP presentation with Finance Director Keith Porger.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Gotta get my seat.
Outback by Al. Sit there with Al, either way.
If you sit at the table, you're gonna get questions.
Oh.
So this afternoon, we have in front of you the city's capital improvement plan for fiscal years twenty-four through twenty-eight. As a reminder, this is a plan, and it does not appropriate funds for expenditures. And any items included in the plan does not mean it will necessarily be included in the city's budgets. The plan is a helpful tool to allow the city to see what will be needed over the five-year period, so we will better understand the implications to our budgets and how we can find the financial resources that will be required to fund the required projects. It's worth noting that when the administration develops the plan, careful attention is given to the constraints of our financial resources. As you know, the financial policies adopted by the city require the debt services be limited to ten percent of our budgeted expenditures. Also, in any given year, there are limited general revenues we can dedicate to capital improvements. Therefore, this capital improvement plan has taken time to develop and is the result of prioritizing our projects and spreading them out over time so that they may better fit within our financial constraints. With that, I will turn it over for questions. We have all of the department heads here ready to do a deep dive and any questions that you have.
Does anybody have any questions about any items? I do have, if not, I guess I'll start off. So we've got the big-ticket item. Looks like the parking garage for lot ten. Anybody's on the line to talk about that? Sure.
Trying to find, do you have a page reference or? Oh, parking, it sounds fun. Andy, do you wanna?
Yeah, I'll take the little one.
Put on that while I try to find it.
It's on page one.
It's, uh, just, page, it's fifty-nine, sixty.
So with the CIP, as we are continuing down our path of looking at development of our downtown parking lots, there is an opportunity to develop lot ten. As you guys know, we had money in Governor Hogan's budget to help finance the hotel and conference center, and are looking at trying to get that put back into Governor Moore's budget. With that, that project, looking at it being a couple phases, if we were to build it out to the full scale that it could be with a large-scale hotel, multi-family units, and/or a commercial space, or grocery store, et cetera, if we were to monopolize that entire parking lot, a parking structure would be needed to replace that. So this is a placeholder, approximately the same amount of money as the lot one parking lot. So if that was to push forward, this is a scene where this could be a potential expansion in our parking structures in downtown.
Which the city would own the parking garage.
Correct. Very similar to what we presented last year's budget, the lot one.
Sure.
It'll become, yep. So that's what this placeholder is.
I think we just wanted to show what, you know, realistically, whether it happens in FY twenty-four or down the line, that there is a need for additional parking structures moving forward and the ultimate replacement of the current garage. And just to get a sense and to get comfortable with those numbers for when they come, and just to keep it on the horizon that at some point, all of these will be needed.
How old is the current parking garage? Is it? It's end of life. I mean, it's.
Nineteen eighties?
Nineteen eighties. I think we were told a couple of years ago that it was.
But money aside, to do some continual improvements to increase its longevity.
And the goal is for that to be grant-funded, for the most part? That's what it was marked here.
Yeah, I think there is an opportunity. Think if I'm looking at that picture right there. You looking at, you reading the text, or you looking at the? In the actual parking garage in the CIP, it shows as a bonded amount of money. But the goal would be, if we were to receive some additional funding from the state, part of that earmark would be to help offset some of these costs.
What, Keith, as far as where we are with bonded debt, what percentage are we at?
What for this calendar year or next calendar year?
For the overall.
Right. If it was completely, and it never, never is completely implemented, if we took this all the way through that five-year period, at the end of the period, the, let's see, the available debt margin. We had at the end of the period, we had debt service about five point eight million dollars left. That's five point eight percent left. So essentially, if everything was done, we would have very limited amount of debt service remaining. But it's better than it being negative, and so we've not gone over what's available with everything that's here.
Yeah, and to reiterate Keith's point, we never get everything in the budget as much as we want or need it.
That was the point I was trying to make.
I know the CIP is like everything that we'd like to have, but oftentimes when we get to the budget, it's what do we absolutely need? To balance everything out.
And just also as a reminder, because we do have a new council person, our parking fund, serving as an enterprise parking fund, is, though it goes against our bonded debt, it is a separate mechanism than our general fund. So we treat it slightly differently.
Any other questions on any of the items?
I wanna go to the fire department. I wanna make sure I see the, um, the vehicle. There's a lot of names for all these vehicles in here. I want the rescue, that's the one I'm looking at, and I see this truck and that truck and the other truck. I don't, I'm trying to find, I'm on page forty-one right now, and I'm looking for the rescue truck.
It's thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
And it's up here as well.
Is it, I guess, the vehicle equipment? Is that what it's called?
It says apparatus replacement rescue sixteen. It's just thirty.
It's not thirty-five?
It's page thirty-five in the book, not page.
Page seven.
It's page seventy on those.
Page seventy on those.
Okay.
Yeah, it's.
So it is slated for FY twenty-four. We made decisions in the previous year not to fund it, and we know that we're, can't push that can down the road any further. So it is slated to be in FY twenty-four budget.
So that's under the vehicle equipment? It doesn't say rescue truck?
Yeah, this is the rescue truck.
That is the rescue, I want something to say rescue truck.
Oh, yeah. Rescue sixteen, on top, yes.
I cannot.
It's a very top line.
Okay. Okay.
Rescue sixteen.
Yeah, so here's at the bottom, it's the different categories of, so engineering being the planning, construction, the vehicle equipment, large-scale capital pieces of equipment, we just categorize in that column. So that's what you're looking at. And at top, it's, we would be paying with bonded debt. It would be the plan on how we would pay for that.
So the bonded debt that we're talking about, that Keith was just talking about, is the bonded debt we're looking at into next year's budget forward, not the bonded debt we have right now for two thousand and twenty-three. Is that correct?
It's taking into account the anticipated amount of the total expenditures and taking ten percent of that and making sure that we're still fitting within the allowable debt service. So for example, there's five, about five percent left of the debt service at the end of that period. So, but, the end of the five-year period. So it's taking into account all of the debt service on the city's books, adding to it all of the additional debt service that will come on due to these expenditures, and taking off all of the debt service that will be removed from the city's books between now and the end of the five-year period. So at the end of the five-year period, you still have five percent of the available debt service for other items. So it's cumulative.
The, I know there's been talk over the past, since I've been on council for a fire station on the north side of town. What's the, I guess it's still looking for a location, and then additional staffing is another piece of that in the future if we do. Because it's more than just the numbers we see for the building and everything. So what's your thoughts on that, Chief? As far as just overall the project and we would expect this?
Well, it's desperately needed. I mean, our call volume to the north end is certainly a challenge for us. When we look at our metrics, and we measure our responses by the National Fire Protection Association, it's a four-minute travel time, and it's impossible for us to get to the north end of our fire district within four minutes. The best that we can reach using GIS metrics is somewhere around Zein Road with daytime traffic. Nighttime, we get a little bit farther because of traffic reduction. But still, to get all the way to the far end of our district, it's impossible in the four minutes. So we continue to look at spacing land. As you know, anything on the north end has a significant price tag associated with it. So we have looked at some partnerships with different places. Some of them just aren't ideal, but we continue to look at where we could put a fire station to help with our response. And then at some point, you're gonna have to start looking to the east because of our fire district is going all the way out to Warwick now. So that's becoming a challenge also.
What, to staff that, what you're, how many, as far as staff, would you need for that department?
It's gonna be twenty-four people at minimum, because you would put, ideally, you would put another capital piece, an engine or a truck, and then an EMS unit. Right now, the EMS unit is, we're staffing our fourth analyst right now, but we're using overtime funds partially to staff that unit. So we would be able to take that fourth EMS unit out of sixteen, where it's currently coming out of, and move it to a new fire station. Then you have to worry about the capital, fire engine, or ladder truck, whichever is placed up there.
Thank you. Any questions, comments about that?
I don't have any more questions about this per se. I don't know if anyone else does, but since we are talking about numbers and Keith is in this room, I do have a question regarding the fire department and some numbers possible for this year's budget for stipends, percentage-wise, according to like years of service for the fire department. I didn't know if you had any time to work on that or if that was even brought to you yet in the two thousand and twenty-three budget. I know we're looking at twenty-four and beyond of this, but I didn't know what those numbers look like or?
So we met, we started initial budget meetings with each department and met with the fire department last week, and they presented some options on pay scale and things like that. I had to head out a little early. I'm not sure if stipends were included in that. It's certainly something we can evaluate. Again, this is, this is specific for capital projects, so we didn't include that in this document. But I'm certainly hearing that that is something that you would like considered, so we can do some homework on that.
I just figured since the numbers were here and Keith was here.
It's a good place to start.
It's a good place to start. I don't wanna forget it's two thousand and three. I know we may have some wiggle room with that. I just wanted to be sure that that gets evaluated.
Any other questions for the fire department? Thank you, Chief. Please say it for the police department.
Yeah, yeah. If we go through it by department, that might be easier to keep everybody all, you know, let them free once they're done.
Good afternoon. I noticed this year, we don't have anything in place for vehicles. I know that we have only years after this laid out for vehicles. How are we looking with our fleet and for that? Can we afford to skip a year, or do we?
So we didn't skip a year. Well, we purchased some vehicles this year with forfeited and seized money, I may be misusing the terms there. But we think that that can, it'll arrive in twenty-four. We're also looking at some additional purchases. Colonel Minchin has made a request of our office to use some additional seized or forfeited funds for, I think, approximately three more vehicles. The fleet is aging. It is.
Well, they age fast.
They do. They drive them hard. You know, trying to get to a take-home program, full take-home program, where the idea is that officers would own that vehicle themselves, get a little bit more life out of it. But again, this was, you know, I think they certainly couldn't take some vehicles back in that year, but that was a decision that we made together that we'd probably be okay with getting those vehicles next year. And then we're, there's some vehicles on the lots with some agencies that have canceled orders. And normally, it takes like a year to eighteen months to get these things to show up. So if we move forward in that, they could be here, you know, a couple weeks or something.
The goal, the goal is to move the Caprice that we currently use off the, out of field use, other than a few exceptions, which are normally our K nine vehicles. They don't receive as much use. The fleet itself, with the ten that we added through the forfeitures and seizure fund, that would give us ten vehicles that we're expecting to receive around May. And hopefully, we'll field, after they go to global, we'll field around late June, early July. The goal from that point, we've, like Ms. Land said, we are pushing towards going to a complete take-home car program, which does actually benefit the city more so because there is savings as far as cost in keeping these vehicles on the road. They're not used twenty-four seven and whatnot after that. How we move forward, so you understand, is certain vehicles, which are some of the older vehicles, are used as take-home cars. The newer vehicles we do is called a shared program. So they are shared between two officers of opposite shifts. And the benefit of that is they're not used as much as the traditional fleet package, which would have been every day, every hour that they're out there. They're being used each day, but only for about ten to eleven hours per day. And then the officer can utilize that as a take-home. So it's kind of moving in that direction and trying to get them there.
That extends the life of them. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for the police department? Thank you, Captain. Since field ops are so eager to sit down at the table.
Have a seat.
It's Mike's second week, so.
See some stuff in place this year for parks. That's always good. I know, have we done, I guess my question, and I know. Have we looked at, have we done maybe a complete review of all of our parks? We have quite a few parks throughout the city of the equipment and everything.
Here.
Kind of like grading it on oldest to newest?
Yeah, quite a bit of our infrastructure's aged, particularly Doverdale, and I believe we have Woodcock in there as well. Woodcock also got hit with the storms though. Most of its playground equipment, which its cost is substantial. But as far as like a true audit of the equipment, no. But when we get caught out in the parks, we, you know, we make notice and we hear that the community has to say, so we've, well, asked for it, we're calling it for that.
And here, we're working through a replacement schedule in all the parks, working with some partners who do park redevelopment. And just with their, that's one of the things, we're hiring a new parks manager here. Relatively soon, we have him transition there. He'll be tasked with helping us create that schedule so that we are working through. We brought some other people out. We've, Lake Street, we've looked at, that is in the next round. But this was through the Community Parks and Playground Grant that just happened. So every year, the goal is to make sure we hit our CPMP and our POS grant cycles within our parks.
Gotcha.
I have a question. So what are we doing with our parks and playgrounds? How are we revitalizing them, and in what order?
So we did a, with the previous director field operations, we went through the different parks and the current ages of the different materials, the playground equipment, and looked at what we felt was in the highest need. The big four, that was Waterside, Lake Street, Doverdale, and Woodcock. And that was done last summertime with a, an organization that replaces playground equipment. We saw Woodcock and Doverdale being the highest to need, followed by Lake Street and Waterside, and then some of our other smaller community playgrounds. But in this year, we knew we needed to get these two on the calendar. But again, we are planning on looking at a full scale. So what you will probably see in the future CIPs is we will name a certain playground, but it may just be a capital replacement schedule for all of our parks. What this is, is these are placeholders for approximately what it would cost. But if it does get funded, the next step is to meet with stakeholders within the community or Parks and Recreation Group, and then actually kind of start picking through what we want that to look like. So we kind of have a mock-up to see how much it would cost so that we have a placeholder when we ask for the funding. But the exact design and implementation will be a little bit more community buy.
Okay. So we, we have, for the, I've been on the council for seven years. We've been talking about the Waterside Park for some years, implementing the pavilion back and doing the parking lot and doing some more equipment and whatever. And not to the day see that that's been done. So what is the holdup on that?
Parking lot's coming this spring. The Waterside Pavilion and Batting Project was delayed. The plan was using a community development block grant money for that. Everything escalated with pricing, but that is still the plan. We still have both of those two pieces are gonna be the plans for that park. So they are coming in due time.
I think we've bid it out a number of times, and each time it was above the dollars that we had to work with, so we had to sort of re-envision what our plan was. But we've got some forward progress here this last go-round. So we had to sort of re-envision what our plan was, but we've got some um forward progress uh here this last go-round.
Well, I want to ask the question again, how essential is the parking lot if the playground is not feasible? If we have a big, excuse me, but if we have a big parking lot, we've got this part that there's really, the equipment is, so we need new equipment? Like now, the pavilion was taken, community never got an answer of why that pavilion was ever taken, it was just removed. And I think that we owe this community, even though it's a predominantly minority community. I think that we owe this communities to give back to them. And I just don't see this happening the way it should be. And like I said, I've been on it for seven years and this has been one of my main tasks. And I'm talking about it every year and we've been talking about it every year and I don't see it happening and I want to see it happen. I could care less about the parking lot right now. Parking lot doesn't mean anything to me. That just means people will go park in the parking lot and do whatever, whatever. What I want to see is some essential and some safe equipment in that park. I want to see the kids thriving in that park and I don't see that. I don't see that and and I want to see that park back like it used to be. And when you take things from us and then don't explain to us why you've taken what you've taken from us, I have a problem with that. And we've never got a simple explanation of why that pavilion was taken. You can tell me a million times that it was because drug use, this used that, and I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm just throwing it out there. But I've never seen it being used for anything but what it was supposed to. People were having little get-togethers out there, people were having baby showers out there, people were having little barbecue and stuff out there. And it was feasible for the community, but now we don't have that, so you don't see that as much as you do. And we want to have a uh safe and vibrant vibrant playground, just as well as Woodcock. Doverdale or any of these other parks. And I'm not saying it because I live in that general area, but I'm saying it, put priorities where they should be. A parking lot, I don't think that's the top priority for this place. I think what is the top priority for this place is to have some safe equipment and have some viable stuff in that community for the kids to use.
Valid point.
Yeah, um I think we replaced, the gazebo was damaged, so the gazebo was removed. There's a distinction between the gazebo and a and a um pavilion. Um so the plan was, and the master plan was to put a essentially what's at Billie Jean Jackson, if you think about it, something like that without the concession sign. Put a large-scale pavilion with restrooms on the side of it. Um I think it was like three hundred thousand dollars was put aside for that. The playground being to make it a regional park so that people can park, we don't have a place for people to park there. So that was the goal, was to be able to increase activity beyond just the neighborhood. Um when we looked at the playground infrastructure, it was not the highest priority compared to some of the other parks, but the need is still there. Um so it is on our list, you'll you will see it on the list, yeah.
Because we have a lot of kids in that community and even Lake Street, and I and I grew up in Lake, on Lake Street. Lake Street doesn't have the children that it used to have. It doesn't have it. Those are a lot of older people, but we have developments where children live and thrive. So we want to have somewhere for our kids to to go and and be safe and and have safe equipment and be able to have fun. And like I say, building a parking lot right now is not the best thing to do. You can, that money needs to be invested in that park, other than the the parking lot. Once we get the park, the playground where it should be, then I could see a parking lot. But we don't even have the, how are you gonna build a a a parking lot and the playground's a matter of. I I'm, that I don't understand and I'm I'm questioning because I need to know. Why would you build a parking lot, I said it from the very beginning, why would you build a parking lot and the playground's a a something?
When we got the funding for that playground, parking lot, um in the field adjacent to it, uh that was money several years ago. Um so that was what the money was allocated for. So April, um I think it's still noted, all their needs, all of those are needs and I think they're equally invaluable. Um we are looking at the pavilion timeline. Um uh our goal is to start seeing construction on that hopefully in the fall. Um so we will, we'll see how quickly we can get that together.
Yeah, because sometimes I just think that, and I'm gonna be honest, and I will be the most honest one. I think sometimes you just say, not you per se, but things have just been said just to push the agenda and make it look like it's going to be done and then it's never done. And I don't want that to happen in any of our communities. I want what we need in our communities and I think this is what we need. And I, it's just not about parks and playgrounds. It's about building your community and building the communities up. And if that's where we have to start with a park, then that's where we have to start.
Yeah, absolutely. I I think one of the issues that we've had within our CIP and just our 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 planning is we, when we were building our plans. Three years ago for some of these things, we were using pricing that was based off of three years ago. It's not even close to the pricing now, so a lot of things are underfunded, so it's moving money around, reprioritizing, finding more money. But we've been tracking these needs and these are high-level needs, so agreed and um and yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh anybody have any other questions? Cause I got one.
I was just gonna ask about the um the two trucks, um the one-ton dump trucks. Um that is on page fifty-one. Okay, um I was just curious, so those are replacing, are are these the trucks that do the like the cardboard pickup or what are these trucks for?
If the the one-ton's are utilized within every division within our department pretty much. Uh we do have some for sanitation, for uh cardboard and recycling pickup. We use them in parks for moving mulch and dirt, uh streets, general revs out. One in parks, I don't have the date offhand, but it's it's nearing the end of its life cycle for our asset and facilities manager. Uh he's, we've we've done what we can to purchase one, but with supply chain issues, we did more to put it in.
Right, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to to check on that and see and then the um. There was something else, it was the the side, what was, I just haven't shoot, the the grapple truck. What 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 would be the purpose of that?
Ball pickup for sanitation and uh s- smaller scale, but still like lar- like uh when we break up concrete pads or when we assist H G D D with a cleaning lane, it would be used to put them in our three-ton dump truck.
Gotcha.
It's a little bit, with excavators being the size that they are and the proximity we work to other houses, they can get really tight really fast, so.
Yes, I just, I didn't, I'd never seen one of those vehicles in person, so I don't, I didn't know what it was for or what what exactly you you.
Primarily to be the sand.
Sanitation.
Sanitation ball pickups and streets in this.
That makes sense.
Public projects, or we can't necessarily use a crane or an excavator.
Um and I think the only other thing I had was the the bridge repair in the city park. Um it's looking a little rough in places, a lot rough, I'll be honest. Little, I mean, I I get a little nervous putting, pushing a nice heavy wheelchair over it in a few spots. Um but I see it's not being, nothing's being done with it until um twenty-five, so. Um the bandstand and the bridge in the city park um have both historically been funded through the endowment at the community foundation. Um we tried to do both last year, um and we didn't have enough funds to do both again because of high high costs. Um so we're in conversations with the um community band group. Um to undertake uh more of an active role in fundraising for that. Um you know. I was gonna ask if there was a community fundraising potential there because. Yeah, so uh Winning Champion, um they've got some ideas on who that can be. Um but that's something, a conversation I started to have with them a few weeks ago, um knowing that, you know, we need to bolster that account a little bit. Yeah, cause I saw that it was, it was, it came up a little short.
From what time on the Parks and Rec Committee, that area of the park is historically designated?
Yeah.
Everything you do has to be.
Yeah, I know, I figured it's mine, yeah, of course. But we've, we've made improvements to shore up um the bridge as it is now, so it is, it is safe for our folks to use. Um but you know, if we, if we can get a group together, get them motivated, um we can certainly um move that along faster. Okay, okay, that's good.
Ms. Blake, anything? I'm gonna ask the question for you. Uh Shoemaker Pond.
Well, I had that, I had that here at the bottom, I didn't want to get into it right now, but go ahead.
It's page fifty, it's on page fifty-eight.
Well, let's talk about it, yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's talk about this, cause.
You know, I mean, we're making, as a city, we're making a commitment to help with that because we have city residents. And it's marked here under Stormwater and the Field Operations.
What page is it?
Uh fifty-eight in the book, but ninety-three uh on the total package. Uh so, and I know the other piece of that is county, so um.
Well, yeah, two other pieces, um county and state.
State, okay.
So we, and and the neighbors. Um so we had a conversation last year uh with with neighbors, with uh county representatives, with state representatives. Um at the table, there was a willingness to work together, um when we left the room, that broke down. Um I think the neighbors are still committed to throwing in a small portion, ten percent approximately is the annual cost. Um but again, you, it's a tributary to the Wycomica River. The the inputs come from far and wide beyond city limits, so this should not be only a city uh funded project. Uh we have not revisited this yet with uh the county executive. Um there have been some other uh priority uh issues that we've need to uh get resolved. Um but this is something we would like to circle back uh with them and and see if there's a partnership there. Um and we need the state um M D E or D N R to, uh D N R to, you know somebody up there. Uh to come, uh to come to the table with some funding because if if we put twenty-five thousand dollars in by ourselves, we'll be throwing away money. Yeah.
And and um I just had met Bunky in the in the elevator. And he said that they're willing to come back and talk about it again. But there has to be a responsibility because what drives the growth of the nut, of the plants is the nutrients that come off the. Uh property along the ri- along the pond that is directs it into the river. So there is something that we have to do, they're gonna have to bear some responsibility at to it and depends on what that is. The other thing I found out is they still do, they investigate and they still have somebody with a license, which is good news. The county has somebody with a license, so that's good news.
I would like to, oh, I'm sorry, April, if you. No, no, no. Um the, the other thing about the Shoemaker Pond, one of the things that's interesting, there's a lot of developments back there too that are very close to the Wildtown Museum, very close to that whole entire corridor. And uh do, they as well use uh a lot of uh chemicals. And our drainage back there, the uh the the glade, the tide mill and Stonegate HOAs. Need to be maybe confronted because they directly drain into that pond. And they're using um uh I guess residential-grade or commercial-grade um chemicals for uh weed whacking, neutralizer, whatever they do to the grass and all that other stuff. So I think not only is it a residence issue, the residents that live right directly on the pond, which I could see that being a piece of it. But those three developments right there also contribute and their drains go directly into that pond.
Anybody that contributes to the problem should be.
A part of the solution. And I don't think they've ever been called to the table before to help with this problem.
Not directly in that capacity, yeah.
We've, we've, we've had conversations with representatives from the direct neighbors, folks that have frontage to the pond, but um you are right, I mean. It's, it's coming from far and wide, um so that's even what we can't explore.
And you could just follow the drains, I will film it for you, I haven't won a film. They go right to, they go right to that pond.
You put a camera down and just let it go all the way out.
I see it, there you go. I got it, I got it. And I'm telling you that those, those developments need to be called out too.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, that's the truth.
Absolutely.
Definitely something we can revisit. One thing that I will note since we are drilling down on this, um you see three years there. That is until we re, we, a three-year strong effort to then reevaluate the conditions. This is a forever situation, um as any of our waterways are going to be. So we put all this money in there, it will continue to be um some sort of level of treatment um ongoing. Maybe not to this level of intensity, but it'll be a constant need.
All right, um do we have any other questions? We do have uh.
Alan's online, Corey's online and Ron's online.
A- anything for arts, business, culture?
Will we get to release field operations?
Pardon?
Will we get to release field operations?
Yeah, I guess.
Cut him loose. Toss him back.
The seat's warm. Alan, have a seat. It should be warm, not hot, but warm. A- anything uh for Alan, which includes Popper Hill, the zoo.
I was gonna ask about Poplar Hill. Yeah, I was getting, I was getting ready to ask about the, about the lift. Where are we at?
Yeah. Uh the lift is nearly, the lift is in.
Okay, excellent.
It's functional. Um we're waiting for uh the contractor to come back and put some bricks down. Their historic bricks to the area, gotta kind of level it out. When it comes down, it kind of off-kilts a little bit.
Okay.
Just minor fix there and then it's pretty much done.
Awesome, excellent, glad to hear it. I know that was the big thing last couple of years actually, so.
How many people does it lift, or one?
One, it's, 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 it's like the elevator.
That's terrible.
That was.
That's terrible, that's, that's, it's a danger. It's, it's a safety issue to me still. Here we go.
There you go, got it.
It's a safety issue.
So is that, is that.
Bouncing around on me.
Is the brick retaining wall and brick patio, is that what that is?
No, that's totally separate.
Oh, that's the, that's the brick.
Retaining wall.
The retaining wall. I got you, yeah, I noticed that was kind of.
Starting to lean on it.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that the other day when I went by there.
I've got a cou- couple of questions about um. The Poplar Hill Mansion. I, historically, I just could, because I don't know, I would like to know, what, why do we actually own that? Why do we actually own it? Why are we paying staff to be there? And why aren't we partnering with the NAB Center to do the curating and fundraising for that?
Uh so those are good questions. Um I don't know historically what got us into the museum business. Um probably somehow the same situation that the county owns a historic building at Comfort Inn um as well. Um I don't think the NAB Center would be in a place to fundraise for us. Um I I'm sure they provide some historical um support to Sarah and the board there. Um but we have a team of volunteers and experts. Um Sarah is a um.
Curator.
A cu- uh you know curator, she went to school for that sort of thing. Um so I think, you know, we're, we're managing that piece um well on our own. Um with some assists from uh the NAB as needed and um experts that are on uh the board. Um it, it certainly provides historical value, um um tourism value. Um I think there's more we can do there, um and that was the point in in putting it under the Arts Business Culture Department. Um it was sort of this, I think, stepchild when it lived under um Public Works and Field Operations. You know, that we could maintain the building, um but for programmatic um efforts, um it wasn't uh there. They had a really um good, successful um uh uh festival, Poplar Hill Festival in the spring. Um there's a lot of opportunities to use that space in a, um I think in a, you know, more forward-leaning way. Um but if we, if we weren't in the business of owning that, um I don't think anybody would, um to be honest, so um.
How much revenue does it bring in on it from these festivals or?
How much revenue does it bring in on it from these festivals or tees or whatever?
I know for a while there, it was a pretty hot wedding venue.
Yeah, they do, it they do. They they do weddings pretty much every week for the better part of.
So so I mean, it it does have.
But do we have, do we have?
It's self-sustaining.
Do we have a number of what the revenue is?
Not with us today.
We get it.
Alright.
When we get down to the expense side.
Does that, that falls under the purview, does that go under the board or does that go under the city per se? Is the money from that, cause I don't, does the city see that money or does the, does the boards? Cause I think, uh, cause it's my understanding that that money goes to the board.
That's mostly correct.
But that, that goes then back to purchases that that we need and curation and stuff like that.
Right.
So it's it's hand in hand. Um but I, you know, Alan's department has been around for less than one year.
Yeah.
Uh he's been dealing with some other uh higher priorities. But I think um a hard look at at Poplar Hill and and revenue opportunities is something that is on the list.
I think that would be really good for us to look at, cause.
Yeah, we had a great strategic planning session with Sarah to kind of talk about the history of Salisbury as a whole.
Right.
And where it should kind of break.
I would like to see it also be connected to the, to the cemeteries. Um the, I I I think that, there's, there's a missed opportunity there to Pottersfield. Cause those, those are connected technically and and and.
Yes, a lot of history.
There's, there's, there's a lot of historical overlap there and and I think we should be utilizing, connecting that, so. Yeah, um the only other thing about it was just the HVAC for the attic.
Yeah, right now.
I know it's been pretty brutal.
It's stored right now.
Yeah.
Um and they're running out of space to kind of be creative. Um and so they've been looking at the attic space to do some different stories of the folks who used to live on, on and around the area. So uh it needs movement, it needs air movement to be able to do so and actually have people upstairs.
Right. What's gonna happen with, what what are they gonna do for storage though, when that?
You have to look at it.
Okay.
Right now.
Cause I know, I know the basement is packed.
The basement's packed and it's not exactly safe to go.
No, it's not, no, it's, it is, I I may have clocked right here a few times trying to go up and down there. Um so yeah, no, I get it. Um yeah, that was, I was just wondering like, cause I knew that we're using it for storage right now. And if they're looking to make it into some part of the exhibit, which I think was a, is a great idea. I think that that history needs to be exposed a little bit more. But um you know, what what their options are, because I don't think they're, they had enough of a time trying to get the ramp in. I don't know what they're gonna say if we wanna put storage on the property, so.
Yeah, we gotta probably look outside.
Yeah, okay. Gotcha, alright.
I think it's fair to point out, Poplar Hill Mansion, uh our city went through two fires. And it's the only building that's still standing after the city burnt down twice. So uh that's, as far as history of the city, it's it's very important.
Yep.
Um the other thing, and this is my only ask, um and it's it's a, it's a little personal. Cause I'm doing a service learning project for my final class. Um and we mentioned Pottersfield and Houston Cemetery. Um that uh street uh needs curb and gutter. Uh because the cemetery properties wash everywhere into the street. And of course, all of that, you know, washes down into our stormwater system. So I think that's something we should look at. Um the other piece, and I wanna work with Sarah on that, is uh we we do have potential for two historical markers. One of them is gonna be the Houston Cemetery. Um mainly because the individual was the first African-American bank owner in the state of Maryland. Who founded that cemetery. Uh the other one is gonna be for Camp Upton, which is where the Union soldiers, which are buried in Pottersfield. But the camp was where the old Daily Times building is. So I think there's some things that we could do for some historical markers uh that I think would be beneficial to, you know, still looking back at our history. So um and that's just my, you know, my my only ask of the budget or CIP. So uh this is something that we could, we could look at. Any other questions for Alan?
I think this went pretty clean.